Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting of the Wadsworth Planning Commission will please come to order. The first item on our agenda is public participation. I would note that we have two items on our agenda. One is a lot split and consolidation plat for 979 Seville Road, and the other one is a planned unit development of Vance Farms properties as a PUD. And then, anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the planning commission regarding that, you'll have an opportunity to do so when we take those items up.
What's happening regarding that?
This is public participation now. When we bring that up, you'll have a chance to speak at that time when we bring that item up.
If you're here for public participation.
If you're here regarding the Vance property, now is the time.
Not related to these two cases, now is your chance.
Okay, I just have a question.
To the podium.
Is regarding the Briers Farm Crescent?
Okay, your name and address.
Chris Whidrich, 711 Aspen Key.
All right, thank you.
Today, they, on both sides of the crescent, they planted grass, which I found peculiar. They're going to build three houses right there. I mean, not grass, you know, seed and straw were all blown. So, I'm curious about the status of that. When I first came here planning on it, before I saw them doing that today, was the condition of the sidewalks, like, I think they're required to clean the road, but they've destroyed a lot of sidewalk, got a dirt, a lot of debris, blocked, whatever. So I want to know, do they have a responsibility during all of this to keep the sidewalk open for us to walk up and down it?
They have a responsibility to put back what they've destroyed. Obviously, during construction, things get torn up.
Right.
But we aren't in charge of that project, so I can't tell you what their timeframe is or what they're doing. You would need to talk to Mr. Samodi or Legacy Home.
So the city doesn't require them to keep the sidewalk clear of dirt, hunks, and stuff?
It's a public or private lot?
It's a long Briers Farm Crescent. It's public.
I'm not aware of that. We'll have our engineering department check it out, but I know that they were doing some work, you know.
Well, mostly, it's on both sides, sidewalk.
Okay.
The south side, they've pretty much destroyed, but that's okay. I don't have to go over there. There's the north side, but there's just, I have to step over rocks and clumps of dirt and mud and, you know, it could be a long, long time all through the summer if they're truly going to build, and if they're not. Whichever way, in my opinion, they should clean up the sidewalk. That's it. Like, they have to clean up the street.
Well, we'll just refer that on to engineering department for, you know, to monitor. Typically, usually at the end of each day, they're required to clean up a little bit, and obviously.
Yeah, and they do the street, but not the sidewalk.
May be torn up for a little while.
Well, I understand that, but the part that's not torn up is still covered in clumps of dirt.
Okay. We'll refer it over.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Or is anyone else under public participation? Seeing none, I'll move on with the agenda. First item under whole business is the approval of the minutes of February 10th and February 24th meeting. If there's no additions or corrections, there are motion to approve both.
Move to approve the minutes as prepared.
Second.
You've heard the motion to the second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Then we have also the minutes of the March 10th meeting, which will be distributed at a later meeting. Moving on to new business, first item is a lot split and consolidation plat, 979 Seville Road, A.
AL.
I'm sorry, A.L.A.V. Heat Treating, Ohio, LOC property owner. Mr. Kaiser.
Okay. I'm going to refer to some of the drawings. I think they're easier to follow than the plat, but basically, city lot 4667, that's the large pork parcel owned by Alfie Heat Treating. It's outlined here in yellow. It has frontage on Seville Road. It's roughly 6.6 acres. The other parcel in question is now owned by Hazuka Holdings, and it is this piece right here on Weber Drive. It's a much smaller piece. I don't remember what it was, but basically, what they want to do is buy some of this backland off of Alfie, so they've got room to expand their facilities. And unfortunately, the, on the plat itself, the match line pretty much lines up with where the new property line is going to go, so it's hard to see. So, at the end of the process, we'd have two new lots, one of 3.6 acres, the other 4.7. Both lots exceed the minimum lot area requirements. And so there's really no big issues, except for one. And then I'm going to go back to the drawings here because it shows up on the engineering The one issue is that the detention basin for Alfie Heating is at the very rear part of their property. It's very close to Holmes Brook. So they still, even if they sold part of this land off to their neighbors, you know, they're still responsible for stormwater management and maintaining the system. So it's been noted that what Alfie is going to have to do is they're going to have to create private easements over the line and basin so that they can get there to maintain it as necessary. Talked to the engineering department. They didn't really see any other issues besides this. They also noted, hey, maybe work on the plat so that the match line doesn't line up with the new property line so we can see what's going on. But they also mentioned the detention basin issues, and obviously, Hazuka, if they would build onto property that they would purchase, they'd have to stay clear of that line or move it with the approval of Alfie, and probably construct their own detention. Those are issues that could be either handled on this plat or by a separate easement agreement. And again, in the future, could one basin be used to provide storage for both properties? Possibly. That's, you know, something they would have to look at in the future. But right now, for just a simple split to transfer the land, Alfie would still need to maintain easements over the basin which serves their site. There's no additional public right-of-way dedication required, so once the plat is revised to address any issues raised by the engineering department, and we've figured out how they want to proceed with the private easement for the access and maintenance to detention, they're ready to move on. So with that in mind, I would recommend approval of the lot split and consolidation plat that affects city lots 4667 and 7895, subject to the three conditions in the staff report.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Kaiser? Somebody representing that project in the audience come forward to the podium, please. Give us your name and address for the record.
Joe Capitosto, 2289 Irene Road, Wadsworth. I represent Hazuka Holdings as a business partner, owning the property at 715 Weber Drive.
Okay. Are you familiar with the conditions?
Yes.
Are they acceptable?
Yes.
Do you have any questions for the commission? I don't know that we have any questions for you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a recommendation from staff for approval with conditions.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the lot split and consolidation plat for 979 Seville Road, affecting city lots 7895 and 4667, be approved with the three staff recommendations.
Second.
You've heard the motion to the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for coming. All right, moving on to our next item is a planned unit development, Vance Farms PUD. Addition properties applicant city lots 9850 and properties in Wadsworth Township, subject to annexation on Hartman Road. We need to set a public hearing. Mr. Kaiser.
Okay. First, a little bit of some background information about this project and the process. One, we'll be reviewing this process following the new PUD regulations, which have now been forwarded to council, and they'll be setting a public hearing on those and hopefully adopting those in the near future. So, under the new PUD regulations, the PUD really becomes more of a, it becomes a zoning amendment rather than a site plan or conditional use. So, the role of planning commission will change slightly. You will follow what you do for making zoning map and text amendments. You make a recommendation, council is to adopt, adopt with conditions, or, you know, to turn it down. So, that's probably how we'll deal with this going forward. The other issue is that, again, a lot of the land is still in Wadsworth Township. The annexation process has started, and council has until June 3rd of 2025 to adopt the annexation ordinance, and I expect them to adopt it fairly soon. The annexation provision is saying, once it goes to council, they have to wait a certain number of days before they can act, but if they don't act by another date, then it's deemed to be disapproved. So, we're kind of in that middle period, so I expect them to act in the near future. And I think we've mentioned a couple times in previous meetings, some of the catalysts for these changes are the council wants to know ahead of time about how a particular property would be developed if the annexation is approved, and they're starting to look at pre-annexation agreements with developers and property owners, so that if we agree to annex it, here's the type of project that we expect, yeah, here's the density, the uses, et cetera. So, while we're moving on, again, we've got two things going on. We've got a project and an actual amendment going in place, so we're trying to time things properly, but I think in the future, we want to try and get as much input to city council from the individual departments as well as the planning commission before they enter into any additional pre-annexation agreements. So we'll probably be bringing you into the review process earlier to at least give recommendations or suggestions as to what zoning might be or what the densities would be, and if you don't have any particular zoning classification on the books, it might work for a project, then we say, hey, we need to adopt something else. But the timeframe and how it's going to play out, still in the process of being worked out. Again, this is new for everyone. So, because this annexation started before the new PUDs were completed and in place, the pre-annexation agreement that council has authorized, and I believe has since been executed, differs slightly from what we've got in the PUD regulations, you know, that they're going to be adopting. So, this particular project would need to be reviewed against the terms spelled out in the pre-annexation agreement. Future PUDs would be reviewed against the new standards, and I just, I bring that up because the new standards were pretty much based on this pre-annexation agreement. Tried to pick out, okay, these are the important things we need to know for a PUD, uses, density, various lot dimensions and setbacks, parking requirements. So all of those things have been built into the new PUD regs. But like I said, we've kind of got the cart going up the gate before the horse, and we're trying to time things up. And so finally, the big thing is that, you know, PUDs actually serve as zoning map and text amendments, and so our new public notice requirements will follow the steps that we take for doing zoning amendments. So that kind of leads us to what we've got here now, which is a planned unit development concept for two pieces of property. The biggest piece is known as Vance Farms. That's in, still in Wadsworth Township, but it's in the middle of the annexation process. The other is a parcel that's already in the city. I believe Wadsworth Farms was the owner of that entity. That lot is currently split between R3 zoning and C3 on the southern half. So I think ultimately, PUD, go through the process, the land coming in from the township as well as this R3 and the C3 portion will all become part of a new zoning district. I believe it was called Vance Farms PUD. So, just right now, to give you kind of an overview of what the project is, it does consist of 280 total dwelling sites. There's 92 single-family fee simple lots. The lots look to be about 7,800 square feet or greater. There's also, and I'll have to zoom in a bit, there's also some townhouse units. There's some, again, these are attached single-family dwellings. Most of them do flank either side of Smoke Rise Drive, and then if we go a little bit here to the south, what they've got labeled as Street C, there would also be some townhouse units flanking there. So the overall density for this project is roughly four and a half units a day. The site does include 17.6 acres of common open space. Most of the streets will be public. I think the only private streets are actually called private drives, and that is, again, I'll try and zoom in here. Looking at the townhouse units on Smoke Rise, there's a private Street A and a private Street, or Double A and Double B. So access to these units would all come from these private drives, so there's not going to be any additional curb cuts on Smoke Rise Drive except for one here at the far west, and then one at the east before we get to the single-family home sites. Another key provision of this plan is that Smoke Rise Drive will be constructed from its current terminus, right over here to the west. It'll be extended all the way to Hartman Road. Just want to let you know that the location of this intersection is being studied as part of the traffic impact study. I know that in the past, we've tried to get it as close as possible to the bend or the dogleg here, and I'd, you know, also mentioned that their submission did include a traffic study, Wetlands delineation report, mine investigation report. Those a moment turned over to the engineering department, but I know that one of the critical issues is going to be this intersection. Appropriate site, is there enough site distance? Might there be a need for turn lanes to help traffic flow in and out of that site better? So, this is the concept and the basic layout of the project. And again, at this point, plans have been submitted to the other agencies, the other departments for their comment, and we'll discuss those in more detail at the public hearing for this. So that's really all I have for this evening. I know the app can see here, it has a brief presentation I'd like to make, but with that in mind, I would suggest that we set a public hearing on this proposed PUD for Monday, April 14th, 7:00 PM. I believe we have some other council committee nights, committee meetings that evening, so 7 o'clock start for planning commission. Are there any questions for me before we?
All right, I think if you're looking at the plan, my biggest concern is that tie-in of Smoke Rise to Hartman Road. It's just south of the, or north of the dogleg, and I use that road often, and there's some real visibility issues coming and going, and my guess is that a lot of those folks, if they're headed to the interstate, or possibly the senior center, to the high school, or YMCA, they're going that way. They're going to come out and go up that way, rather than go out to High Street and go fight all the traffic lights and all that other stuff. So, yeah, I'll be very interested to see what the traffic folks and the engineers come up with as to, but I think just a T isn't going to work long-term. We're going to need some other infrastructure, and that's my opinion. So any other comments from the commission?
Can I ask when the traffic study would be commence, or is it already started?
It's already started. It's already been through one review, and I believe our engineers, our consultant has commented on some of these issues. So, they're in the process of discussion. I think they know what the issues are, and I'll find out a little bit more from the city engineer tomorrow, but that is a critical issue, probably the key. We do want Smoke Rise Drive to go through. Again, it takes some of that traffic off of High Street, and I know, but finding a good location's always been a challenge. You go too far south, and you might pick up a blind spot on the other side, plus you're hitting the ramps as the, you know, the street rises to cross over I-76. So, it's going to be a little tricky, but I think it can be done. But will this be the ultimate, the final location for that intersection? Hard to say.
Could I ask if annexation would go to the middle of the right-of-way on Hartman Road, or would it take the entire Hartman Road?
I think it goes to the, it will go to the edge of the property. Now, this being in the township, typically that goes to the center line of the public right-of-way. Yeah. So, west side, west side apartment would be in the city, the east side would be in township, and I think we have situations like that all over town, where we, Happer Road, I think, is one of them.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Kaiser? I understand somebody from Vance Farms property wants to say something. Your name and address for the record.
Tommy Visconti, address is 3401 Enterprise Parkway, Suite 410, Beechwood, Ohio, 44122. Members of planning commission, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to discuss our general development plan and rezoning for our property that's located just west of Hartman and north of I-76. I'll refer to it as Addison-Wadsworth. My name's Tommy Visconti, as I mentioned before, and I'm with Addison Properties. We're a local residential land developer with over 20 years' experience, and we're committed to creating communities that people are proud to call home. Jeff gave you a little background on what we've been doing these past few months, year and a half, and I'd just like to summary, or summarize that up as well. So this past summer, we spent a lot of time working on our site plan, working through multiple different iterations, taking into account various stakeholder feedback. This past November, as Jeff mentioned, we officially filed for annexation. Throughout the remaining part of November and into December, we worked closely with Jeff and with Tom Morris to finalize the pre-annexation agreement. This pre-annexation agreement outlines approval processes, permitted uses, development standards, setbacks, open space, lot dimensions, and design guidelines. On February 18th, city council approved the pre-annexation agreement, so this plan's really the work of a collective effort, and I'd like to take the time now to thank Jeff, Tom, Glenn Davis, and the rest of city staff for all their help, support, and guidance throughout this year, year and a half. We could not have gotten this far without you guys, so thank you. So the subject property includes multiple parcels, three different owners, and multiple zoning classifications, as Jeff mentioned. So we're requesting to rezone to a planned unit development, or PUD, and what this PUD will do is it'll allow us to create a unique and cohesive, well-designed community. Right now, the proposed plan, we have a mix of detached and attached housing, and I'll go into that plan in just a bit, but I wanted to talk about kind of how we got there. So we try to be as creative as possible, but the baseline for our development planning is actually driven by the goals that are defined by the city. The city's annexation policy identifies this area, that's south of Reimer and north of I-76, as appropriate for commercial and residential uses, including PUDs and cluster subdivisions. A key requirement of that annexation policy is the extension of Smoke Rise Drive to Hartman Road, a major infrastructure improvement that we will be building for the city. So this will improve traffic flow, connectivity, and support the surrounding area. Another key guide is the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan identifies this area as part of a new growth area, and that supports a mix of detached and attached residential housing. The comp plan calls specifically for the attached housing to be strategically placed near business areas, which is exactly what we're proposing. Our plan follows four key themes from the comp plan's visions and goals. Theme number one, land use and development, excuse me. A well-planned, attractive community with flexibility in design. Theme number two, neighborhoods and housing. Encourage a healthy balance between single-family detached uses and attached residential uses that allow residents to age in place and also provide housing opportunities for young working professionals. Theme number three, services and infrastructure. Ensuring roads, utilities, and public services can accommodate growth prior to any new development. We will be upgrading and extending water and sewer to support the city's needs, and as Jeff mentioned, will also be extending Smoke Rise. Theme number four, community mobility. Require improved connectivity through complete streets and implement access management practices. As I mentioned, just mentioned, we'll be extending Smoke Rise Drive, which is identified, also identified in the city's transportation plan update, is a high priority. So now I'll jump into the site plan. So our plan includes 92 single-family homes and 188 townhomes, for a total of 280 for-sale market rate units. As Jeff mentioned, the overall density is 4.5 units per acre, which is well below the six units per acre permitted in our pre-annexation agreement, and also below the 7.3 units per acre in the annexation policy. This density and these units are an appropriate transition from the higher-density multifamily to the north, and from the commercial to the west of us. The single-family units will be 60 feet wide with a mix of one-story and two-story units. Again, we want to provide options for both families, those wanting to age in place, and for young professionals. The townhomes. The townhomes will be a mix of first-floor primary bedrooms and second-floor primary bedrooms. Again, the goal is to provide a, you know, diverse option for variety home buyers, just as the comprehensive plan has outlined. We've been also very thoughtful in how the community is laid out. The townhomes are positioned near the commercial uses to the west, near the higher-density multifamily to the north, and near I-76 to the south, ensuring kind of a thoughtful land use transition, which also aligns with the comprehensive plan and annexation policy. We'll be providing 17.6 acres of open space, or 28% of the site. And as mentioned before, a key component of the project is to provide the city with the unloaded extension of the main thoroughfare, Smoke Rise. We will be building this to city standards, working with the engineering department, and this will be a public road dedicated to the city. And at the city's request, as I mentioned, it will also be unloaded, meaning no direct driveways on Smoke Rise. So, this will help maintain a smooth traffic flow and improve connectivity.
Excuse me, I have one question.
Sure.
All that open space, it seems to be clustered mostly around the single-family homes. Is all the folks to the west going to have some access?
So, we have open space up here as well, and open space all throughout here and down through here.
I understand that. I'm asking, all those folks in those smaller units, are they going to have access, walking trails or whatever?
Yes, residents will have access to all, all residents will have access to the open space.
Thank you.
So, we'll also be extending and upgrading the water and sewer infrastructure to not only provide utilities to our property, but to support Wadsworth's future, their future needs. And without kind of going into every single detail of the pre-annexation agreement, I just want to be clear that what we're proposing here fully complies with all aspects of that pre-annexation agreement, including setbacks, permitted uses, lot dimensions, design guidelines, open space. And our plan is also very consistent with the annexation policy and the comprehensive plan. We think it's going to be an excellent addition to the Wadsworth community and bring much-needed new quality housing to the area. Thank you, and again, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any other questions from the applicant at this point?
Can I ask, do you plan on choosing a builder at some point? What point do you plan on choosing?
So, we have a lot of relationships with national, local, regional builders. We have not chosen a builder at this point.
Do you have multiple relationships?
We do, we do. Yep. I'd say in the next, in the next few weeks, we'll probably choose a builder.
Any sense of, in your mind, what the build-out would be timelines?
Build-out, if it were to be approved and annexed into the city, it'll then go through final engineering, so all the very technical details of...
No, I understand that. Once you start building...
It'll, it'll take three to four years.
Okay.
I was actually going to ask about that, the phasing and how you would...
So, phasing, it'll actually, so Smoke Rise will be put in first, and these townhomes, a portion of the townhomes will be part of Phase 1, as well as a portion of the single-families will be part of Phase 1. But Smoke Rise and the infrastructure going into Smoke Rise will be put in right off the bat.
Okay, so when we get to those details, you'll have phasing plans and all that?
That's, yes. A phasing plan's included in our submittal.
Yeah, my, I was just going to point out, there is some coloring here to the various units. Do those represent kind of...
It is, yes. So, you see, the green is the first phase, and there was a key over here, but in order to try to squeeze everything, I couldn't fit it. The purple here is Phase 2, Phase 3, and Phase 4.
All right. Well, we'll get into that in the detail.
Yep.
All right, anything else? The applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff has recommended we set a public hearing for April 14th at 7:00 o'clock. Is there a motion? Is there anyone else in the audience who should address the planning commission? Just with them. All right, we need a motion to a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a recommendation that the commission set a public hearing for the proposed PUD for Monday, April 14th at 7:00 p.m.
Second. Heard the motion to the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Other business, the mayor, I believe, has an appointment he'd like to make to the ADC.
Yes, I just wanted to bring the, to the attention of the commission that we have a vacancy in the ADC, which is the Architectural Design Committee. One of the members is to be an architect. We actually have, we're fortunate to have an architect on that committee, but as fortune would have it, another individual, by name of Randy Parsons, is an architect, and would like to submit his name as, for consideration to be, to fill that vacancy.
All right, you're recommending?
And I'm recommending, yes.
Can I second the recommendation?
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That's all on our agenda. Mr. Kaiser, is anything else?
No, that, I think...
Public hearing for the 14th?
I think does, yes, we'll have that hearing. It's three weeks away, I believe. There's an extra...
Yeah, pretty close.
So, I'm hoping by that time, we'll have a lot more information back from engineering and the, you know, issues related to the traffic impact study. And I'll go through it in a little more detail, and if there's any missing parts to the application, I'll work with Tommy to make sure that we've got, got everything we need.
Okay. Is there any else the commission wants to bring up, CD? That is their motion to adjourn.
So, move.
We are adjourned.